All right, good evening, everyone. It is 7:30 P. M., and I'd like to call the meeting, this October 18th, 2023 meeting of the Downers Grove Public Library Board of Trustees to order. Please stand forward and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the library of the United States of America and to the republic which stands under our nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We acknowledge that the Downers Grove Public Library sits on the unceded, traditional, and ancestral homelands of Native peoples. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the indigenous people who have been caretakers of the land throughout generations, past and present. We invite you to learn more about the genocide and forced displacement by non-Native settlers and the ongoing injustices against Native peoples. Caitlin, can you proceed with your call, please?
Yes, Trustee Doherty here. Trustee Humphries is en route, I believe.
Yes, he is on his way from the airport.
Not here yet. Uh, Trustee Kuntia, here. Trustee Niemberg?
Here.
Uh, Trustee Sleda?
Here.
President Gagani?
Here.
Here, did you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Can you hear us?
Yep.
Okay. Um, and Trustee Niemberg is participating remotely in accordance with the Open Meetings Act and our board bylaws. All right. Item number four is the approval of minutes from the September 27th, 2023 regular meeting.
I will move to approve it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. You can open the floor to any discussion. All right, if we have no discussion, we could proceed with a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. And all those abstaining?
Abstaining.
All right. The, um, minutes have been approved. Item number five is financial matters, September 2023 financial report and October 2023 invoices.
All right, um, so the village finance department did not get us the revenue and fund balance reports prepared in time for this meeting, so those are missing from your uh packets and will be, um, coming to you later. There was also a late, um, update by the village to the NICOR invoice amount. So the invoice edit list in your packet is incorrect. It's the, uh, NICOR amount is slightly more than the actual, um, so you have a corrected one. Um, it came to the board emails shortly before the meeting. Everyone who's here in person has it on paper. Um, but the only change is that, uh, NICOR bill, which is slightly less than it was in the one in the packet, and a corrected packet will be posted. Does anyone have any questions on the finances? I want to draw your attention to the additional, um, financial report that, uh, is in your packet this month. That has been prepared by Caitlin in looking at some of our neighboring libraries, uh, and what they put in the, in their board packets. Naperville Public Library also uses, uh, their city also uses Munis software, and this is, uh, based on something that they compile monthly for their board. Um, you have just the expenditures because of course the revenues were not prepared, um, by the village finance, so we couldn't do this with it. But I just wanted to ask, um, Caitlin can speak a little bit more to this. Uh, she prepared this report, but I just wanted to draw your attention to it and, and get any feedback on the way that is presented. One of the things that had been requested was, um, like a, a monthly kind of budget, um, take. We, we cannot get that through the Munis reports, but in this report, it reports on month-to-date for the current year and then month-to-date for the previous fiscal year. So it kind of gives you a sense of where those budget lines are in respect to where we were in the same budget line last year. So that, that way you can kind of see where those things that are maybe quarterly or annual costs cycle through each year.
Seven hundred and sixty.
It's doing something funny.
Hey Caitlin, this is, yeah, this is still, this, quick comment. That, that's a definite improvement. That's getting close. It still would be great in the future to have something that showed where we are tracking its current year budget on a time-phase basis.
Okay, and I do have a meeting scheduled with, um, the village to go over, you know, other financials, other financial reports from Munis that they do utilize as well. Um, and we're gonna kind of brainstorm and see what else we can get out of the system. Um, and I did also reach out to the finance director at Naperville Public Library just to see what they've been able to do with Munis. He's not there, is he? Oh, yes, okay, good. Um, and so I'm hoping to get some more information from both of those groups as well, um, to see what else we can do.
Hey, and I'm here.
Helpful.
Um, I know we don't have the revenues version of this alongside the expenditures. I think the other challenging and sometimes confusing part are both people that join us in this meeting who are not familiar with the way our budgets work and sometimes ourselves who, who are familiar with the way our budget works, is that revenue isn't steady. It's not like we, we get it twice a year, we get it through taxes, and so it, it's confusing when we're, when we're almost like done with the first pot of tax money. It looks like we're, we're overspending or underspending based on where, where we are in a year. And so I'm just trying to figure out like, if there's a way, I, I don't know if there's a way to like, to like make that more obvious, like, because it's hard, it's hard to say seventy percent through the year, but eighty percent through revenue makes us look like we're spending more. It might be, but it might also just be because, be because we don't have the revenue deposit yet from the taxes.
Yeah, they don't move together. Um, that is hard to, because the two, the revenue, the expenditure and the revenue sides of the system do not, they don't work together. Um, you'd think they would, but they don't. And so let's say we get a refund, um, for some, from something that we had already spent. That refund will show up in revenue because it's money that we took in, but it is not reflected back into the expenditure report. So basically staff, let's say we get a refund of a thousand dollars in the professional services line, staff in that department will just have to know, okay, well, my line is going to look like it's a thousand dollars over budget at the end of the year, even though it's not. But that thousand dollars is only reflected in revenue. Um, and that was actually the same issue with, um, with the Eden software as well. So, um, that does make it challenging, too.
Yeah, I didn't realize that. Thanks for explaining.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we, we work as best we can within the limitations of the finance software that the village provides. Sometimes that's, uh, challenging.
Do we have a motion? I will make a motion to approve the financial matters as presented. I have a second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the financial matters as presented. Caitlin, can you proceed with your call?
Trustee Doherty, yes. Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Niemberg?
Yes.
Trustee Sleda?
Yes.
President Gagani?
Yes.
All right, so the financial matters have been approved. Um, item number six is public comments. Um, before we open the floor, I'd like to just remind everyone that public comments should be directed to the Board of Trustees. Um, and the Board requests that members of the public limit their comments to three minutes, um, a max of five minutes per speaker and thirty minutes total for public comment are allowed. Um, and I, uh, have the discretion to modify these. So with that being said, um, we'll take, if you'd like to go ahead and open it up.
Good evening. My name is Marsha Bridgerson. I'm a Downers Grove resident and a library patron. I'd like to express my gratitude to you, trustees and staff, for maintaining LGBTQ+ resources amongst your vast and diverse collection at this library. These materials help our queer youth find characters and situations they can relate to and help our straight youth learn about other identities and develop empathy and compassion. The freedom to read is an essential component of maintaining our democracy, and our library is ground zero for that. I've been attending these meetings for several months now, and I have to say that I am very distressed by the manner in which people present their issues and concerns. After listening to the majority of board members being treated with open hostility and disdain, I am truly saddened and disappointed by members of my own Downers Grove community, my neighbors, in their problem-solving approaches. The anger and contempt, the name-calling, the labeling, it's all very upsetting. I was particularly concerned last month about the many children present in the audience, those who we as adults are supposed to protect. Children learn what they live, and certainly last month, those in attendance learned that it is acceptable to bully people and behave badly. I have no issue with lodging complaints and expressing concerns. Yes, you, the Board, and staff members may make mistakes, handle things badly, respond poorly, and yes, we may be personally impacted by that. But they also most often do things brilliantly and should be commended for that. We may not always get the answer we want. We may feel the response is unfair. We may even be told no, but that's part of life, isn't it? Being adult enough to recognize that not everything will go our way all the time? Have we not learned the basic sandbox skills to play nice? Do we really need to air our personal grievances for eighteen minutes in a public forum? Might that have been an opportunity to lead by example with a collegial conversation? In tandem with addressing the hostile and disrespectful behavior being directed at our board members and staff, I would also like to strongly refute the anti-LGBTQ+ rhetoric that I also hear at these meetings. This hate speech refers to LGBTQ+ individuals as "the gays," portrays LGBTQ+ books as promoting heterosexual youth to become gay, and implies that being or supporting queer people is anti-Christian. All of this promotes the false narrative that queer people are deviants who deserve shame, intimidation, threats, and harm. A recent Washington Post study cites that more than ninety-five percent of pedophiles are heterosexual, more than ninety percent are heterosexual. That pedophiles target vulnerable youth, and with LGBTQ+ youth experience four times the amount of homelessness over their straight counterparts, it actually becomes quite clear, if you're listening, who needs and deserves our protection. And yes, LGBTQ+ people also deserve to see themselves represented, represented in stories and history. They deserve to be visible and to be treated with respect, just as our library board members and staff and each and every one of us do. So I implore you, trustees and library staff, keep these resources out. Our LGBTQ+ youth can learn a lot about themselves and others like them, and perhaps also learn strategies to help protect themselves. Our straight kids, who will not turn gay because they saw or read a book, may develop a deeper sense of understanding about other identities, compassion, empathy, and respect for others who are different from them. And I implore you, my fellow community members, my neighbors, please, let's do a reset. Complain away, but remember to treat others as you would like to be treated. Let's stop this bitter, vitriolic cycle of disdain. We're better than this. I have to believe we're better than this. Thank you. No clapping, it's not a rule. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, uh, I've been a homeowner and a taxpayer here for thirty-eight years. Standing in reputation at this library in Downers Grove was a large factor in my deciding to move here. I've been attending these meeting, these board meetings for several years now because of the value that this library adds to the community. I was appalled by the behavior of one of the trustees at the last meeting. I haven't seen such an egregious display since six years ago. Trustee Nairnberg, all right, sorry, Niemberg, your comments at the last board meeting were inappropriate and unprofessional. I'm sure you enjoyed your twenty-five minutes of virtue signaling and plain identity politics, but a library board meeting is not a place for the board member to make a political speech to his constituency. Library trustees are supposed to represent all the residents of Downers Grove and not just your own political faction. Other trustees thanked everyone for their comments and participation, complimenting them for taking an active interest. You, however, chose to speak as if you were not a member of the Board, but rather a political representative in opposition to the library. I've been on a few boards myself, both, uh, business and professional. Let me explain what you're supposed to do. As a board member, you're supposed to do your homework, show up, discuss the issues and decisions needed, vote, then own the decisions. You don't seem to understand what owning decisions means. When the Board reaches a decision, that is a decision of the Board as a whole. As a board member, that is now your decision, as it was reached through Board deliberations. Own the decisions of the Board. I have seen people, business boards, get thrown off the Board for refusing to own the decisions of the Board and, uh, rebelling against that. If that frustrates you, welcome to being on a Board. You don't always get your way. It's your responsibility to persuade others of what you think is the best course through rational arguments. I've seen you do that at times. I've also seen other times where your argument consists of simply repeatedly insisting things be done your way. That's not a rational argument, and it's no surprise that rarely convinces anybody to change their mind. Act like a board member. You chose to skip one-third of the board meetings this year. You chose not to attend in January, May, and August. You said you had other things to do that day. Well, don't we all? Then you had the gall to complain that the Board continued to do their job during the meetings you chose to skip. The Board is not here to serve you. You are here to serve the library and the people of Downers Grove, all of the people. I also find your comments very insulting when you complain that including all people from Downers Grove in the library's activities is somehow divisive, want, or dwelling in garbage. How is including everyone divisive? Do you know what is divisive? Pay everyone to a group of small-minded bitches that should be no part of this library. If you want to run for political office, go right ahead, but don't take up the library board meetings with your political camps reading speeches. Either step up and act like a board member or step down.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Katie Johnson, and I have been visiting the Downers Grove Public Library my entire life. Uh, as a child, I lived within walking distance of the library, and I would often insist on bringing my radio flyer or wagon in order to maximize the capacity of what I could bring home. Um, and I continue to be a very frequent library patron today. Um, I'm also speaking to you tonight as a representative of the library's foundation board. From anyone in the audience who isn't familiar, the foundation funds extraordinary gifts for the library beyond taxpayer support. Um, so if you ever used a book club bag or checked out, uh, chroma colorblind glasses or attended one of the Eleanor Library's present virtual events, or even admired the artwork by the, um, automatic self-check-in, uh, you've interacted with the foundation's impact, perhaps without even knowing it. Uh, as a patron, I'd like to say a heartfelt thank you. I came across a quote recently from an interview with Bonnie Garmus, the author of the wildly popular Lessons in Chemistry. She says, "Imbalance in a vote spells failure. The same is true in everyday life. So when we choose to create situations dominated by one race, one gender, one religion, one outlook, we create imbalance, and the result is havoc." Thank you for ensuring that this library is so much more than one story and one outlook. And further, thank you for navigating through all of the havoc. I know it isn't easy, yet you remain steadfast, and that commitment is part of why the Downers Grove Library has been recognized as a five-star library. Now, speaking on behalf of the foundation, as many of you know, we recently held a fundraiser during banned books week. We met our ambitious fundraising goal of twenty-five thousand dollars, which can be transformed into future gifts for the library. Fantastic. Uh, but the real take-home for me is that despite some of the voices that are often the loudest at these meetings, the event sent a clear message that the community loves this library almost as much as I do. Uh, we had over eighty percent attendance. We nearly sold out of the capacity of ticket sales, and most of those were from Downers Grove residents, and we had over two hundred people in person at the event with even more engaging virtually. We also had somewhere around forty local businesses donating their time, talent, and goods. So I'll say it again, representing everyone that engaged with our event and that engages with the library daily. We love the library. Thank you for all that you do.
Hi, I'm Marchmark. I'm a twenty-six-year, um, Downers Grove resident. My, public speaking is something I hate doing, but I'm so passionate about sharing, so that's why I'm doing this. Um, but in the time that I was young, my mom instilled a great love and respect for libraries in me. In turn, I have passed that on to my own kids as well. This library is one of the reasons why my husband and I decided to make this community our home. Libraries are safe, welcoming, engaging, and fun places to be for the entire community. You can always ask librarians for advice, researching a paper, project ideas, or good books to read. We've always enjoyed the various library programs. I started bringing my own kids as soon as they were old enough to come to infant story time. We love taking advantage of the various resources and programs that this library offers. My youngest loves this place so much, she got a job here when she turned sixteen. Need to borrow a digital camera or get materials transferred from another library? The process is simple and free of charge. We look forward to the seasonal reading programs, craft programs, historical interpreters, and community read presentations. Last week, there was an excellent and extremely informative presentation on supporting LGBTQ+ youth through traumatic experiences. I'm pleased to see some faces from that presentation here tonight as well. Do I feel the need to get upset, feel threatened, or complain if an offering isn't something that my family or I want to participate in? Absolutely not. Julie, Jen, and the entire staff are welcoming to all, and the materials and programs offered here are great examples of them. Everyone is different, which is what makes life an adventure. Step outside your comfort zone, don't close yourself off, you may be pleasantly surprised. Thank you.
My name is Robin Trylove, and I've lived in Downers Grove for more than thirty years. I want to address just one of the recent issues that have received attention at the library, that is the library's land acknowledgement statement. On this subject, I've observed that some people have a lot to say about lives they've never lived. Some who are Catholic seem to feel personally offended on behalf of the Catholic religion because the Catholic Church is mentioned in the land acknowledgement. While I respect their personal feelings, the facts support this mention. According to Kathleen Holcher, an associate professor, professor, and endowed chair of Roman Catholic Studies at the University of New Mexico, quote, "The Catholic Church was a key player in the devastating colonization of the Americas, operating more Indian and boarding schools in the United States than any other religious group and more than all other religious groups combined." These numbers come from the lists created by the Catholic Truth and Healing Initiative and the National Native American Boarding School Healing Coalition. U.S. Secretary of the Interior Deb Haaland, who is Native American, has ordered an investigation into the history of these schools and a search for the graves of children who may have perished at them. Announcing the initiative, Ms. Haaland said she hoped it would, quote, "shed light on the unspoken traumas of the past." I know that this process will be long and difficult. I know that this process will be painful. It won't undo the heartbreak and loss that so many of us feel, but only by acknowledging the past can we work toward a future that we're all proud to embrace. Further, there seems to be a dispute about the use of the word genocide in the advisory statement. To this point, I offer this statement from the Catholic Truth and Healing website, which consists of resources compiled by a collaborative group of archivists, historians, concerned Catholics, and tribal members. Quote, "The impact of the boarding school policy has been recognized by tribal nations, scholars, and many others, including Pope Francis, as one of cultural genocide and a source of intergenerational trauma with continuing effects today." Close quote. But for me, any wordsmithing of the library's land acknowledgement statement misses the point of having such a statement. As the Native Governance Center says, quote, "Every moment spent agonizing over land acknowledgement wording is time that could be used to actually support Indigenous people." Close quote. In the words of Chelsea Vowell, a Matisse woman from the Plains Cree-speaking community of Lake, Lake St. Anne, Alberta, Canada, "Acknowledgements, quote, 'can be transformative acts that to some extent undo Indigenous erasure.'" I believe this is true as long as these acknowledgements discomfort both those speaking and hearing the words. "The fact of Indigenous presence should force non-Indigenous peoples to confront their own place on these lands." Close quote. I believe the library's land acknowledgement statement should not relieve us of the responsibility to learn about Indigenous peoples or to take action. While acknowledgement is a way to promote an awareness of Indigenous presence, land rights in our everyday life, a subtle way to recognize the history of colonialism, and a recognition that these people still exist and practice their cultures today, it should also summon us to seek deeper knowledge and understanding. Both with, with its ongoing Native American programming and in crafting the landing management statement, the library has and continues to partner with Dr. John Low, a citizen of the Potawatomi Indians and a scholar of American Indian Studies, and Joseph Stanigbear Schrantz, an Ojibwe elder and founder and president of the Midwest Soaring Foundation. This foundation is a Native American organization whose mission is to work toward repatriation, protect sacred sites, educate the public, and promote community building among all people regarding Indigenous life ways. Its mission includes educating the public about various American Indian cultural issues and building community among all people. So one way we can take action is by attending the library's Native American programming. Since instituting the land acknowledgement, the library has hosted fourteen events featuring Native experiences. These events include three that were funded by the American Indian Library Association's Talk Story Grant. We can also join, volunteer, donate, and attend programming by Native organizations. And since we're at a library, we can all read about our nation's history and about the Native peoples who are here before us and are still here today. In summary, we are a composition of diverse groups, races, and structures that have set in place to put some humans at a disadvantage, and inequality is a major threat to social and economic rights. As the organization Facing History in Our Souls says, quote, "We believe the bigotry and hate that we witness today are the legacy of brutal injustices of the past." Close quote. Standing in solidarity with those who are hugely affected by this inequity gives them a source of renewed hope and helps in fostering good relationships. Humanity should really be about looking for each other.
Hi there, uh, I am Mike Bryan, a ten-year resident of Downers Grove. We've all heard the idiom that says, "History is written by the victors." The next time that someone tells you that the application of the word genocide to events that predate World War II is inaccurate and unfair, please consider that our understanding of history, or anything from that matter, evolves as new evidence comes to light. Yes, history is fraught with conquerors and the conquered. When there are deliberate efforts to extinguish a culture, a people, or a history, we call that genocide. How can we possibly trust ourselves to stop genocide from happening in the future when we are not honest with ourselves about what genocide looks like? we are not honest with ourselves about what genocide looks like, especially in the face of facts that might conflict with our biases? On two or three occasions, I have heard a board member express concern that there is an entire generation that is behind academically, and that the library should do more or something about it at all. Each time that this is mentioned, I have noticed that there is no accompanying suggestions for improvements, requests for information, or follow-up. There is also no acknowledgements of the very well-known library services, programming, and staff efforts dedicated to improving the academic posture of the next generation. Not one. When I step back and look at it, I fear that the concern over academics is being used as a prop rather than a genuinely held belief. Regardless, I do try to give people the benefit of the doubt, so perhaps they are unaware of the ways in which the library is working to improve academic outcomes of the next generation. There are resources to help children with their homework, both electronic and on-the-shelf arranged by topic. The kids' room staff are the kindest, least intimidating, most approachable set of librarians and assistant librarians that I have ever met. They'll drop everything to help you, and that's what our children need. If your kid is struggling, the kid's desk will help you find a tutor. During the school year, you will always see tutors working with children in the kids' room. I was just there. There is at least one or two tutors working with kids today. At the May 2023 each board meeting, the Children's Service Manager reported that during the 2022-2023 school year, the outreach program engaged with 11,000 children in school classrooms and daycares, both public and private. When I think about this, you can only fit so many kids in a room and expect to have some sort of productive event, but that comes down to hundreds upon hundreds of outreach programs per year. The September 2023 board meeting included data on the summer reading program for the Children's Service area, and I love looking at this. During the summer months, 1,912 participating children read or had read to them. I did the math. I'm pretty sure this is right. They read at least 14,192 books. I can't, these numbers just blow me away as they show that there are a huge number of parents, grandparents, guardians, aunts, uncles, what have you, that appreciate the importance of early literacy. And I love that the library enables this for them. I will add that both of my kids were among those who contributed to those numbers, but they will do almost anything for the opportunity to get prizes from a gum box. I think that we can all agree that a decline in academic scores amongst our children is very concerning, and it's a fair one to have, and that our library is probably doing the best that it can with the tools that it has. And I would like for credit to be given where credit is due. Thank you very much to the board, and thank you very much to the staff. I appreciate everything that you do and everything that you have to deal with.
Hi. I just want to say thank you to the library. I'm Frank Cody from the quality Downers Grove. I don't know what we'd do without the library. We started here, our very first meetings were here. We formed in order to make Downers Grove a more welcoming village to people that might not be welcome in other places. We started our focus on the LGBTQ community, but there's a lot of groups that are not, that are often not welcomed. The poor, immigrant families, people of color, and all those groups have LGBTQ members as well. There's been a lot of unwelcoming going around, but not here. Everybody's welcome here. This library is becoming the new village square. Besides the usual functions of the library, you know, stuff like books. You're bringing people together. You've got programs for the hopelessly computer illiterate, which seems to be growing daily. People want to crochet hats. People want to learn to write. People want to just listen or watch movies or play games. You've set up a meeting place for one of the most universally shunned groups since the dawn of time: teenagers. And you're doing it all for free. You know, a lot of us don't need the library quite like we used to. We have money, and we, I can buy books that I want, rent movies that I want. But a lot of people don't have money. The poor, the homeless, this place is a haven for them. And it's a great place for the rest of us to come together as well. That's what my wife and I do, come here and meet and connect with others. So, thank you. You're a model for the larger village and community that we all need to see.
Do we have any other comments? All right. Thank you, everyone.
Bill, I'd just like to confirm that you're still there and able to hear us.
Yeah, I was having trouble with the internet, so I switched locations, so I'm good now.
All right, on to item number seven, trustee comments.
Go first, I'll act. And I'm timed it, it's two minutes. I've been on this board for nearly a year. We trustees all take this role seriously. We volunteer because we care about the library and the village. I've lived here, by the way, since 1979. I meant what I said last month about appreciating the level of community engagement, but I have some suggestions for anyone who comes here to actually raise issues and complaints about the library. Lower the heat, please. You're not helping your case by making nasty comments about or personal attacks on board or staff here or in your correspondence. You can make your point without being rude, mean-spirited, or threatening people. Maybe even make some suggestions, not just complain. Who teaches rudeness and threats and bigotry as an effective means of protest? Who views that as an effective means of protest? Try to understand that the role of the board is limited by statute. We have some broad fiscal and policy oversight, but we do not and should not get involved in every practice, procedure, and personnel matter. We do not and should not control every aspect of collections and programs. That's why we hire a director. The director, by the way, is the board's only employee, and the only employee whose performance we, as a board, review. If and when discussion is necessary as issues arise, that will take place in executive session as a matter of law and common decency privately, as with any employee in any sector. It will not be made public. Finally, this is a secular institution in a constitutionally secular government in a secular country. We take our oath of office to that constitution. As a board, we have no ulterior motives or hidden agendas. We are not arbiters of morality or fixers of societal problems. If we do not at any given point adhere to a particular set of religious or political values, that does not make us Marxist or socialist. It makes us America, exercising our rights as you do yours. Thank you for your participation and your attention.
Thank you all for being here today. I have been a trustee of DGPL since September of 2019. I take my oath of office and my commitment to the DGPL and the community that we serve very seriously. To that end, I felt it was very important to address some of the comments and frankly, misinformation that was spread at the last meeting. First, we are sent the board packet in advance of the meeting. We have the responsibility to review and prepare ourselves beforehand. We have time to ask Director Malick questions, which allows her time to prepare and provide clarification at the time of the meeting. To be clear, we do not rubber stamp every request as suggested. We are thoughtful in our approach to all matters on the agenda. The land acknowledgement and Indigenous programming. It was suggested that DGPL has not kept their commitment to Native peoples in providing resources and learning opportunities to our community. To be clear, and for anyone who knows me, I am wholly against performative statements, which is why I am proud that DGPL has hosted 18 programs featuring Native voices and experiences since the inception of the land acknowledgement. Additionally, there have been nine book lists created, as well as Indigenous book bundle giveaways. My personal favorite was the Book Reading and Discussion in March of 2022 of Wading Sweetgrass by Robin Wallkinner, a citizen of the Potawatomi Nation. I personally have a deep interest in Ayurvedic teachings and is curious to learn about the possible connections between the understanding of the use of plants by Indigenous peoples with the practice of Ayurveda. I include this little tidbit to make it clear that there has been programming and there have been opportunities to learn and to grow. Onto the word genocide. It is a very heavy word, never to be taken lightly or thrown out casually. As I have said many times in meetings, we learn and grow from acknowledging our past, facing this past so as not to repeat it in the future. It is so we, as a community and a country, take heed and make sure it never happens again. At DGPL, we are very fortunate to have trained staff, specialists in their field, who spent countless hours researching not just one or two resources, but an exhaustive list, which you can find on the DGPL website. These are the uncomfortable truths of our country. Whole cultures, languages, peoples have been wiped out. That is not an exaggeration. The severity of what happened should never be softened for our comfort. In acknowledging our past, we can move together into the future. Now, many of us sitting here on this board are frequent users of this library. We are active patrons, as well as trustees. We participate in programming. We go, we check out books. We volunteer at the DGPL booth at the farmer's market. We take the time to chat with patrons. We get to know the staff. We help people sign up for library cards. And we watch the numerous patrons coming in and out of the library daily. We witness the sheer number of toddlers and families here at Toddler Storytime. Do you know that this Monday, there were over 70 children at Toddler Storytime? Seventy children! Little toddlers at Storytime! We see the number of smiling faces of the kids checking out books. We chat with the patrons, producing the hot weed section. Last week, I met a woman who had just celebrated her 82nd birthday, searching for the second book in a series that she loved. She shared with me how DGPL helps her with the loneliness she often feels. She had no idea I was a trustee. She was just offering up a conversation with me, a fellow patron. We are here. We chat with the patrons. We hear the giggles of the kids as they watch the conveyor belt swallow up their books as they return them. We watch them measure how high they can stack their books on the self-check machine. DGPL is a five-star library. Over 1,000 people answered our survey. 95% strongly reader agreed that felt the library was an important part of their community. 93% saw the library staff as knowledgeable and helpful. 95% considered the library to be clean and well-maintained. 89% thought the library was a welcoming and safe place. It is evident in the large amount of funds generated by the Downers Grove Public Library Foundation to explore, support extraordinary gifts to support DGPL, that this library is well-loved by our community. Any claims that it is mismanaged are not true. Lastly, I look forward to the implementation of our strategic plan initiatives, reaching goals set forth by this community, and striving to be a place where our community continues to discover, grow, play, and learn.
Mine will be very... I do, just really quick. I have just a couple, and they're about around disappointment. So first of all, I'm disappointed that I missed last month's board meeting. It's my first one I've missed in five years, I believe, which is a little bit, a little bit crazy. I'm sure David has me beat, I'm not sore, but... So disappointed, you know, obviously for missing that, seems like a lot happened. I am disappointed that I only today was able to watch the recording of that meeting, and I am now further disappointed in the behavior and rhetoric shared by a fellow board member at that meeting. I am not disappointed, however, by all of the support and appreciation and thoughtfulness in the comments by both the public tonight and my fellow board members tonight. It's greatly appreciated and certainly very thankful that you are here and that your colleagues on this board with me. As Marty mentioned, we come here every month and we do our best to uphold our oath and to serve our community, and that is what I hope to continue to do. So, thank you.
Hi, first of all, I would like to apologize for coming late. Originally, this meeting was scheduled for a month later, a week later, and for very valid reasons, it had to be moved up a week. And for also valid reasons, I had a pre-scheduled activity in Texas, of all places. And my plane was a little bit late getting back, as I sort of expected it to be. So I'm sorry I missed all of the public comments tonight. I will read it in the minutes. I will listen to the recording for that. Beyond that, I'm not going to repeat a lot of what we have just heard from my three colleagues here, but he had said that I agree with 98% of what the three of them said, and the other 2% is probably inconsequential. I am disappointed at times for some things I hear from the audience and occasionally from a fellow board member. I do not at all object to people disagreeing with me. I disagree with other people. I do hope that our code of conduct is followed, which invites a certain level of civility, which I support and always have on this board. I've been on the board longer than anybody else here, and I think we've maintained that level of civility in almost all cases, and I support that. The only other thing I will mention is that at the last meeting, there was, it was suggested, it was pointed out that at an earlier meeting, some board members disagreed with, initially with the use of the word genocide in the land acknowledgement statement. I was one of those board members who initially questioned the use of that word. However, after researching the word and researching the, well, confirming the research that had been done by the Midwest Soaring Foundation and our own staff members in preparing the statement, I changed my mind. I decided that it was indeed an appropriate use of the word genocide, and I hold that belief to my do today. Thank you.
Phil, do you have any comments?
Sure, I'll just take this opportunity to say that I stand by my previous comments, that the use of the word genocide, the singling out of the Catholic faith, and other aspects of the land acknowledgement statement are needlessly divisive. We don't lack, for examples in the world today, of what happens when ethnicities, races, cultures, and countries are pitted against each other. Right now, the most stark examples might be on foreign shores and with foreign wars, but trust like, trust that things like our land acknowledgement statement are working steadily to bring them to our homeland. I remain steadfastly opposed to the current language in the land acknowledgement statement. I would point out that one of the resources we used to develop the land acknowledgement statement makes no mention of the word genocide on their own website. And I look forward to continued dialogue and improvement in this. I think there's place for a land acknowledgement statement. I don't think there's any place for the divisiveness that we have allowed to perpetuate in the land acknowledgement statement.
All right, thank you.
All right, I will go last. At last month's meeting, Trustee Nienberg made some very discouraging comments. It's disheartening to know that we have an individual who seems to be more interested in steamrolling the other trustees, and more importantly, our director and staff, just to garner applause and ovations. This behavior is not what we expect from a board member, who should work collaboratively with the other five members. I'd like to take a moment to address some of the criticisms made by Trustee Nienberg about me specifically. As the current president of the board, I work tirelessly to keep the meetings efficient while maintaining decorum. It's my role to proceed with scheduled meetings if there is a quorum. Per Trustee Nienberg's comments, the board did not, quote, "see fit to value his perspective and honor his request to delay a meeting that had been scheduled, frankly, since last year, when the calendar was approved." His insinuation that the decision was based solely on the fact that it was his request, as opposed to any other member, is insulting and false. He had options to ensure that his thoughts were included in the discussion, but he chose not to make use of those options. Regarding the land acknowledgement discussion in August 2021, Trustee Nienberg referenced, quote, "some members of this current board that questioned the use of genocide." Unfortunately, what he conveniently failed to mention was that what followed those voiced concerns was a productive session where the authors of the land acknowledgement provided additional details on the inception process and vocabulary choices. Based on this compelling information, I felt confident in my vote to adopt the land acknowledgement. Now, onto more general attacks on the library. I want to remind everyone here that the Downers Grove Public Library proudly holds a five-star rating by the Library Journal. While there's no doubt that the material collections that the library holds are some of the reason, I and many other Downers Grove residents can attest to the fact that the staff is truly the reason why our library is one of the finest in the state. I can confidently say that the trustees sitting here tonight in this room are true library patrons. We check out materials. We participate in programming, and we volunteer. This is why we understand the true value of this institution. The idea that you can make informed decisions by thumbing through an agenda once a month and pointing out percentages ad nauseam is a misguided notion. Most of us have volunteered at the farmer's market library table, where residents proactively approach us to share wonderful stories about how important the library is to them. Let's talk about the stellar staff and some of their expenses. Much to my surprise, Trustee Nienberg had criticisms about the recognition and programs and seminars line items of the 2024 budget. I'm surprised because these concerns were not voiced even one time during our budget discussions in June, July, or August. And yes, I know he wasn't here in August, but he also chose not to submit any feedback in writing. He chose to bring this up in September in front of a well-curated audience. It is not uncommon for employers in both the public and private sectors to not only encourage but mandate continuing education. Conferences and seminars are the staff's way of committing to the continued success of this library. In fact, in response to patron safety concerns, some of this line item was allocated to both in-person and online participation in the library's safety summit. As a reminder, the strategic plan is a driving force in budget allocation. In our newly adopted high-level plan, one of the suggested initiatives is to increase staff investment. We cannot continue to be a five-star library without creating an environment for our staff where they're encouraged to thrive. I recognize the financial struggles that many of our Downers Grove residents are facing in these trying economic times. I also understand that the library provides free resources for career skills development, job placement, literacy, safety, and countless other areas of interest that our residents desperately need. Our board bylaws state that the trustees are to act in the best interest of the library. It is not in the best interest of the library to miss meetings without any submitted feedback and then play Monday morning quarterback accusing fellow trustees of lacking courage. It is not in the best interest of the library to state, quote, "You may have noticed that we haven't done any significant Native American program," when you clearly must have missed every single discoveries issue, social media post, and email from DGPL highlighting the countless Native American programs and resources the library has provided since the passing of the land acknowledgement. It is not in the best interest of the library to state, quote, "Kudos to the library staff for their performance over the last year, because despite those inflation numbers, you managed to post another year of underspending," unquote, and then blast the staff for their budget requests two months later. Now, Julie has provided an extensive director's report for us tonight that addresses a lot of the misleading information presented during last month's trustee comments, and I highly encourage each and every one of you who have genuine concerns to review all of it. I want to assure everyone that my commitment to this library is genuine, and I am proud to serve to ensure that we continue to reach the goals that have been laid out in our new strategic plan. Thank you.
May I add one more thing? I don't think we've congratulated the foundation on that wonderful fundraiser on a lighter, happier note. I don't think I've had that much fun at a fundraiser in a really, really long time. It was wonderful, and thank you all very much for your support of the library. I bet Melissa would have won the trophy for best costume if we had a prize for it.
All right. Item eight is the library's record. Well, I have a longer report than most mumps, possibly because I was not here in the September board meeting. I was busy having surgery on this thumb. So a lot was said at the September board meeting. There was a lot of misinformation and opinions presented as facts, but the fact is that this is and will continue to be an award-winning library that meets the needs of this community. DGPL is a five-star library, one of the two highest distinctions for public libraries nationally. Our Kids Room was named the number-one library in the western suburbs for kids. Two of our staff were named Library Journal's movers and shakers in 2022, one of the highest honors for library staff. Our staff are writing articles for national and statewide professional journals. They are presenting at national, statewide, and regional conferences and continuing education events. And you, our public, continue to use the library in droves. We literally had thousands of people attend the Lego Train Show in September. Just this morning, eighty-eight people attended regular old storytime, and those are typical attendance numbers for us in this fall season. Checkouts are strong. In our strategic planning process, that survey and focus groups showed that the vast majority of our community is satisfied with the library. So bear that in mind when people are presenting their own opinions on the library. My written report this month focuses on setting the record straight with links to board meeting recordings, meeting packets, and other documents available on our website. This is a transparent organization. Most of the information is there if you look for it. So as for the land acknowledgement, again, the August 2021 board meeting was where that was passed. The recording is on the website. Go look at it. Go listen to it. Read the board packet. The statement regarding the Catholic Church was in the extended version approved at that time. At the August 2023 meeting, the statement regarding the Catholic Church in the extended version was updated to include other Christian churches. No notations were added. Citations and supporting documentation were updated. Dr. John Lowe and Joseph Standing Bearishramz both continue to work with the library on Native American programming and remain active partners, as you can see in the report on Native American programming in the meeting packet. Prior to February 2023, the only window painting done at the library was as a participant in two annual downtown business management corporation events, Window Art with EQDG and Halloween Window Painting. Following the frameworks set by our partner entity for their events, no policy was in place. Now that we've had a request and a test case, a policy will be developed before dealing with a request for eight-plus months in the future. As was stated by a trustee during the recent update to the board bylaws, abiding by the American Library Association's Library Bill of Rights and Freedom to Read statement have been part of those bylaws for decades. Our longest-time residents may remember them being referenced back in the 1990s when the book Sex by Madonna was being challenged. Apologies for the confusion over one staff member's use of the word transcription in reference to the new minutes service being utilized. We utilize their Minutes for Recorded Meetings service, which provides a summary, not a transcription. The question of consistency among library departments was brought up. We are consistent in our overall work rules and procedures, which are detailed in the employee handbook, while allowing individual departments to set up their own procedures within those parameters. With departments that range from three members to dozens of members, and the small department doesn't run a public service desk and the large department does, work rules are not the same, and this is not unusual for any employer of size. As anyone who read the September-October Discoveries newsletter knows, this month, the new children's program series, Community Celebrates, began with Indigenous Peoples' Day. We also had Native American art and trivia for teams, and the Illinois Library Presents this month featured Chills and Thrills with Stephen Graham Jones, an award-winning Native American author of horror, science fiction, and experimental fiction. And not in the Discoveries, but as everyone probably viewed on their way into the building tonight, photographer Heather Hathaway Miranda is in the galleries, and her work features Native Americans and other Native peoples prominently. All trustees were able to review and comment on the board in June, July, and August. This is our typical process. Over ninety-nine percent of the budget expenditure increase for 2024 were three items: personnel expenses, cleaning services, and the increase to the electronic resources budget, all of which were discussed in detail at previous meetings. Support of continuing education and wellness goals appeared in the Equity Strategic Plan, which was originally passed in April 2022. Ninety-five percent of the library's revenue is property taxes. That's the way Illinois libraries are funded. As taxpayers know, property taxes are paid in June and September, so our revenue collection occurs late in our fiscal year. The village, through an intergovernmental agreement, covers any cash flow issues during the year because the change in the village's fiscal year is what caused that situation. We have collected more than budget in revenue for each of the last seven years. That's every year that I have been the library director. There was also reference to $80,000 being paid to RGW Consulting, and that's been thrown around repeatedly. To be very clear, that was two and a half years of work, including the development of the Equity Strategic Plan, multiple all-staff-and-trustee trainings, creation of staff affinity groups and teams, and much more. Links to the FOIA's with details are in the board packet. The library's tax levy is separate from the village's tax levy and is a pass-through at the village level. They are completely separate lines on your tax bill. The library's levy does not directly impact the village's levy. The fact is that when the library passed a 4.5% tax levy dollar amount increase in 2022, that EAV increase that was referred to as spin at the last meeting was 4.9%. So the tax rate decreased, and the taxpayer actually paid less per $100,000 of home bill. Think that year was a fluke? In 2023, the 1.1, I'm sorry, in 2021, the 1.1% increase to the tax levy dollar amount was again offset by the increase in the EAV, which resulted in another decrease to the tax rate. The fact is that the library's tax rate has decreased every single year that I have been your library director. You can look it up. For the record, the last five years of numbers are in the June, July, and August board packets. If you want to go back further, I have the records back to 2007 readily available. A costly third-party investigation into allegations made by a former employee found no wrongdoing. The comprehensive investigation concluded that no laws, policies, or procedures were violated as alleged by the former employee. For someone to claim otherwise when they have full access to that complete report is defamatory. The strategic planning process was undertaken by the library and included the incorporation of the Equity Strategic Plan from the very beginning. It is specifically called out in the RFP that was issued and included in questions to the consultants in the final interview. All trustees participated in the strategic planning process every step of the way, from having their own focus group to participating in the strategic retreat. Rethinking Libraries Consultants reiterated in August that the process of refining and editing the strategic retreat results into a high-level plan is their typical process. Nothing was removed by library staff. Everything is captured either in the plan itself or in the addendum, all of which are on the website. And finally, I want to finish with a quick personal story. Story is powerful. Story provides windows, doors, and mirrors, connecting us to others' experience and reflecting our own to show that we aren't alone. Through story, we can learn a little more about each other. So I'd like to share a story with you about my mentor and professional inspiration, Mr. Alfonso F. Trezza. Mr. Trezza was the proud child of Italian-American immigrants, a decorated World War II Air Force veteran who married his sweetheart upon return from the war and put himself through college and graduate school, working at Drexel University, the Free Library of Philadelphia, and Villanova University. He moved his family to Chicago to become director of the Catholic Library Association and then became associate director of the American Library Association. His next move was to become the director of the Illinois State Library, where he helped to found multi-type regional library systems that are the backbone of resource sharing in Illinois libraries today and why you can still get your books from those other libraries when you want them. He then went on to become the director of the National Commission on Library and Information Science, the federal agency that administered funding to libraries and was the precursor to the Institute of Museum and Library Services. He ended his career as a professor of library science at Florida State University, where he was my faculty advisor and mentor. But he was my professional and personal inspiration long before that, because he's also my grandfather. So if you want to look up any of that, the Illinois State Library Heritage Project has three separate sections on Mr. Trezza, and his picture still hangs in the Reaching Across Illinois Library System headquarters. So I say hi to grandfather every time I go to a board.
We are on to item number nine, which is new business, first being the 2024 library and holiday closings. first being the 2024 library and holiday closings.
All right, there are no changes to our closings. This is our typical schedule. However, we will be monitoring Rotary Growth Fest and their schedule and may suggest changes to our closing around Growth Fest as we assess the impact on parking and access to the library. And since we happen to know who's going to be handling the entertainment area, we figure we've got to look in on knowing how that's going to go down.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the 2024 library closings and holidays as presented.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the 2024 library closings and holidays. Do we have any comments or questions? I have a comment.
Yeah.
And I would love to offer, and it might not be this year, that we try to include Juneteenth as a paid holiday. I think that it is important. And I've discussed this with Julie already, but I think that I would like for us to look forward into possibly the 2025 year that we really think about adding Juneteenth to a holiday. Any other comments or questions? All right, well, let's proceed with voice vote. All those in favor of approving the 2024 library closings and holidays, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. And all those abstaining. All right, we approve the 2024 library closings and holidays as presented. Agenda item 9B is the 2024 board meeting schedule. And one thing I will point out, Julie and I spoke briefly already. March 27 falls on the District 58, District 99, St. Mary's, and Avery Quinley Spring Break, which covers the board and probably many people in our audience. So I propose that the March library meeting gets bumped up to March 20. I think the rest will at this point. I will move to approve the 2024 board meeting schedule as presented with that change of the March meeting being moved.
Oh, second.
We have a motion and a couple of seconds to approve the board meeting schedule as presented with the amendment of the March 24 meeting moving to March 20. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. And all those abstaining. All right, the board meeting schedule has been approved with that March date change. And then Agenda item 9C is the Resolution 2023-1, Recognizing 2023 Milestone Anniversaries.
Sure. Actually, I'm just going to read it out to you. So this is a resolution of appreciation for the service of staff members who have celebrated milestone service anniversaries in 2023. And whereas 15 members of the Downers Grove Public Library staff have celebrated milestone anniversaries in 2023, totaling 145 years of service as follows. Five years of service: Karen Gustafson, Lisa Hung, Cindy Catree, Omar Martin, June Martinez, Van McGarry, Tim Rao, Sandy Rizzo, and Lindsay Sheehan. Ten years of service: Kristin Purcell and Jen Brieske. Fifteen years of service: Sue Benke and Janet Kadenoff. Twenty years of service: Jessica Bose. And 30 years of service: Maria Patisil. And whereas the committed service of these staff members-
The library will be closing in 15 minutes. Please hurry the items to checkout to the self-checks or the first-floor service desk at this time. Again, the library will be closing in 15 minutes. Thank you.
The committed service of these staff members have contributed significantly to the library's high level of performance and high reputation in the community. And whereas 2023 has provided many new opportunities for service, including working on the new 2023 to 2028 strategic plan, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Library Trustees recognizes with great appreciation the dedication and perseverance of these staff members and thanks them for their outstanding work.
And then this would be unanimously approved. Yeah. So all those in favor of adopting is still need a motion. Oh.
I hope we approve the recognition, all of the wonderful recognitions as just read.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Resolution Number 2023-1. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those approve, opposed, please say nay. And all those abstaining. My bedtime's hitting quickly, so. All right, thank you so much. And I'm very impressed by these years of service. So we're very grateful that we have staff that are sticking around for such a long time. They're very valuable.
An extra shout out to Maria, 30 years of service. She is back in our Access Services Department and absolutely does such fantastic work. We're just grateful to have. All right, Agenda item 9D is the Fiscal Year 2024 Work Plan. So we are working on how this work plan will look for the reporting in the monthly board packets. But all initiatives come straight from the addendum with the project as how to get there and the active steps are where we are now, what's being worked on with a target date for that piece. There is also a point person for each of these initiatives. As I said, we are still working on and would take any board input on metrics and outcomes that you would like to see for measurables with these items.
Do you have a quick, just a couple of quick questions?
We might just mention quickly to our audience who may be wondering what we're talking about. This is the first year's implementation and accountability reporting for the strategic plan, which has just been approved. Sorry.
Oh, no. Only comments I've had. I guess I noticed, okay, so under strategic focus access regarding the Summer Reading Club being translated into other languages, there was a quarter three target date. And I was wondering if it's possible for that to be moved up to quarter two, just to have that rolling for the 2024 reading club. So that was in relation to, let's see, get Summer Reading packets and welcome packets translated into languages requested by District 58. I would just love to see that as a quarter two target.
It's a little bit of a misnomer. Our quarter two target is, for the beginning of Summer Reading, is actually to have those in Spanish and was there a second? Was to have those in Spanish for the upcoming fiscal year and then work with District 58 on what other languages that would might not seem.
I had a couple of questions. One, I think I know the answer to, but I just want to confirm because the planning this year is a little bit, the timing is a little bit odd, right? Because we approved the plan and the budget at the same time, where that usually happens in a different order, which is then tricky for staff to plan for the stuff they're going to be hoping for doing. So I think I understand that the work that we're seeing here in this work plan is with the budget as approved, as allocated that we saw last month or two months ago. And there won't be any, for what's planned this next fiscal year, that's won't require any extra budget or any extra allocations from the board.
Yes, and in this past fiscal year, you will know that in our professional services line, that we had both the strategic planning process was in there as well as the consultant that we used for our salary benchmarking project. So we held that budget line at the same as 2023 with the understanding that one of the main areas of focus that came out of the strategic retreat, even though we hadn't yet passed the plan, was the idea of looking at space within the library. And we knew that that would come with some consulting. So we kind of held some money there for items like that so that we can continue using consultants for things like that, for things like translation services, et cetera. Yes.
And my second question, just because this is fresh in my mind from having gone through strategic planning recently myself, do all, and maybe hopefully all the table can answer this. Do the departments who live in the library, are any of them kind of disproportionately on the hook than others? And are there any that, are all departments able to see themselves in the actions and the items that we're seeing here today? I kind of scanned through it and think it was. I also don't, I don't have as good of a sense, obviously, about like the three-person departments and 24-person departments and how that plays out. So I'm curious about that.
A lot of these initiatives are definitely cross-department as we do have a point person for each who will act kind of as the project manager for that particular initiative. But we will have multiple people working on most of these initiatives. And we did actually go through that at the management team level and looked at, okay, who is in charge of what? Is that, are there too many for this person? Someone else stepped up and said, you know what? I can take this one since you have, you know, three others. So yes, the staff are working together on it. And we are trying very hard to make sure that no one department is disproportionately impacted and that what we are asking of each department is all within their capacity.
Good, yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. I'm glad that that conversation has happened or has happened or continues to happen.
That's why the work plan starts at the management team level so that, you know, the managers are very intimately involved in who's going to be the point person, what are going to be the target dates, what is the scope of this initiative for this year? And some of the initiatives will be multi-year.
Yeah, and that was another thing that, just a general comment, because no annual plan ever fits within a year. Nearly at the end of the century for us to expect like January, December 31st, all your work on this thing is done. So I appreciate that realism.
And we do anticipate some of the initiatives may grow and evolve over time, especially as we see things, you know, what the needs of the community are as we work through. One of the things that we found in our last strategic plan is we had a couple of kind of really ambitious partnership kinds of things that were included as goals that turned out that the partners weren't interested in doing what we had said we were going to do. So there's also that aspect as well.
I am excited to see the research on maker spaces.
May I have your attention, please? A library will be closing in five minutes. Please bring the items you wish to check out to the self-checks or the first-floor service desk at this time. Again, the library will be closing in five minutes. Thank you.
And I was just going to say, I would love for trustees to be kind of involved in some of those. I'd really like to, those obviously are a little bit more of a financial investment. So I would love to be involved in. All right.
And I have to say that, you know, this information came out of the strategic retreats that were back at the end of May. And it did take Rethinking Libraries allowed to get those results to us. But staff have had these in hand since the very end of June, beginning of July. And so they're really excited about some of these. For example, as Ed can attest, a group of our IT folks have already started touring maker spaces in the area and talking to other libraries about what they're doing, how do they staff it, what do they have, how much do they cost? All of those things because they're excited to.
I think the level of excitement by staff in doing something like this ambitious strategic plan speaks well to the work that has gone into the plan and to the accompanying EDI. It also speaks well to the management of the library. You don't have people sticking around in any organization for 10, 15, 20, 20, 5, 30-plus years if they don't have confidence in the management.
I did have some thoughts about like what you're talking about, metrics and measurements. And I think a couple of things. One is to kind of have a comment first. I really appreciated the balance between some of the items that were more exploratory, like go visit some maker spaces, go investigate what this would look like, go talk to people and see what this could be, balanced with producing something, like we know what you want, we're going to do the thing. And balanced with also, we have a thing in place and we're going to continue doing it. So there's kind of this life, like, right of exploring, responding to whatever we found through that exploration and then, you know, turning it into a more mature program. And so each one of those kind of cycles might have a different way of tracking, like how, what it means to be done with that thing. So what I was thinking, you know, as I was reading through and looking at the different columns, I'm going like this because my thing's silent.
I know neither.
So I was thinking for each of the action steps, you know, is it just a matter of having kind of a follow-on, like, measure of success? So the action item, create a team advisor, that's a really simple one because the measure of success is there is a team advisory group. Like, okay, that's pretty straightforward. And so most of these seem like they would be pretty straightforward and they're kind of binary, like, did the thing happen or did the thing not happen? Some of these, though, might have a little bit more like quantitative aspect to it and I'd have to look through to see which ones, like if it's something about expanding outreach out to, I don't remember if that's in here, but we have a number now, we have a number at a certain point in the future, and now we see how that changes over time. So that's like a pretty straightforward one. But a lot of these do seem like, review capacity and need for expansion. At the end, we'll have a report about the capacity and need for expansion. It's a pretty like one-to-one thing. So adding a column like that, or even if it flutters this too much, just kind of having that as a separate checklist or something like that might be a simple way to turn each one of these into a measure.
We did plan that it be an extra column, but we got too wide for the board packets, so I'm sorry about that.
Then I have to scroll and turn my head.
So again, we're working on how we're going to be presenting these in the monthly packets so that they are legible.
Yeah, and easy to kind of look at a glance, like, oh, great, yeah, we're on track for these and, you know, working on these and maybe we need to rethink whether they're going to-
The library is now closed. We deliver open tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. Have a good evening.
I apologize, I have been out of town and haven't had, you know, a quick scan shows that I have a high level of support, but I may have specific things that come up and I'll share them with everybody.
So we anticipate having a- So we anticipate having a kind of final draft for you all at the November board meetings, and if you have anything else to say, once you cogitate on it for even longer, do reach out, you can send me whatever feedbacks that you have, you know, something suddenly strikes you as the, hey, I'd like to see this as a regular measure for something, or have we thought about, or have we?
Hey, I just thought of this. Obviously, organizing it by kind of strategic pursuit makes sense, you know, just coming off of that plan and kind of understanding what those different categories are. It might be useful to have some version of that by the timeline, right? So what are we looking at? Because there's a bunch of stuff to do in quarter one, but they go across all the different, so for us to kind of go through and say, what are we expecting to happen? And it's color-coded by category versus like having to go through category quite important, like making those connections ourselves.
They're also, all of these are living in Google Sheets currently, and so we can, so staff can sort them at any time, and there may be some merit to having those accessible-
Yeah, like a hyperlink versus-
Yeah, like a hyperlink that people can go to to see where we're at, where you have view access, and you can sort it, but you can't change it.
Yeah. Wonderful. Thank you for presenting this draft. All right, item number 10 is unfinished business, which we do not have any. And then item 11 is our executive session. Immediately following our executive session, we will just be coming back to adjourn the meeting, so while you are welcome to stay, there's nothing else happening to the executive session, so just wanted to let you know. And I wanted to thank everyone for coming out tonight and, you know, your interest in the library. That being said, do you have a motion to move into executive session?
I don't think so. Or person, as stated on the-
Oh, yes. Yes, I will make a motion to- All right, do we have a second? All right, if all those in favor of moving into your second session, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, folks, let's adjourn this out into the bobbies and trustees and have their own-
So we are back into public session at 9:33 p.m. Surprise, it's this early. Might get to sleep at 10:00.
First, you have to officially come back into open session.
That's true.
And then you have to-
So take a motion or just a declaration?
Motion and a second. To reopen the day. Oh, you did already? Well, that's fine. That's fine, then you can just move on.
Yeah.
All right, well, the time is at 9:34 p.m., and we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much.